Thirty second. Thingamajig. We are live, so whenever it hits 6:00 PM, you are ready to go. Very good. Thank you. Almost there, guys. Just under. Oh, here we go. Six o'clock. All right, council, I'd like to call this meeting of April 5th to order. And I will start it with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I've asked Councilmember Marks if she will lead us.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Thank you. An invocation. I understand that Pastor Greg Kirk is in the house. Is that true?
I do see him, so, okay.
Greg, you're muted.
About now.
Now we hear.
Hey, I'm in the house, okay? Happy Easter. I hope everybody enjoyed their Easter time. Well, let's pray. Well, Father, let us always remember to stop and reflect on the blessings that we have. It's so easy to get distracted in life, especially in the midst of challenges that we face. So today, Lord, we woke up with breath in our lungs, an opportunity to hug our spouse, to hold our children, to walk our dog, to enjoy the sun. And I pray, Lord, also tonight, for our mayor and our council as they adjudicate issues that are impacting our community as we all come together. I pray that we would do this in a way of graciousness and respect. And as always, bless Chief Espinoza and Chief Wyatt as they protect our community. And we pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Greg.
See everybody.
Thanks. All right. City Clerks report on posting the agenda and roll call.
The agenda was posted on Wednesday, March 31st, 2021 at 3:50 PM. Rebecca Armandaris.
Present.
Dion Bracco.
Here.
Zach Hilton.
Here.
Pedro La Romoños.
Present.
Carol Marks.
Here.
Fred Tovar.
Here.
Murray Blakely.
Here.
Okay. All council members are participating remotely pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order, number N2920, in order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus. The meeting is being livestreamed from the city website, cityofgillroy.org, and is viewable on Cable Channel 17 and on Facebook Live. Public comments can be made during the meeting by watching the meeting online on Zoom at and passcode 339994. When I call the item you wish to speak on, press star nine on your telephone keypad or use the raise your hand icon. All right, we have some employee introductions by Jimmy Karen and Chief Espinoza. So in whatever order the three of you would like to go.
Okay, let's just go in that order, Mayor. I'm very happy to introduce Mr. Harjot Singhha. He is our new Finance Director and started with us on April 1st. Harjot comes to us from Morgan Hill, where he spent approximately eight years in the finance world, starting as an accounting technician. We worked together back in those days and always had a really high level of respect for Harjot and knew that one day he would continue to climb and do great things. And so here he is with us. His most recent position was Assistant to the City Manager for our friend Christian Turner up in Morgan Hill. And he's also been the Accounting Manager, so he has a lot of finance experience and also very global level understanding of city government. He has a bachelor's degree from San Francisco State in Business Administration and is currently working on his master's degree as well. So I know he has young kids and a job, so good luck, Harjot. It's not easy, but it's worth the time putting in. So with that, Harjot, if you'd like to say a couple of words to the new council, this is Harjot Singhha. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jimmy. Madam Mayor, council members, my fellow teammates and the community watching at home, streaming. Truly an honor to be part of the Gilroy team. You know, I've been part of the South County for over eight years, almost nine years, and I'm excited that I get to kind of stay in the South County and still be participating in the region. Again, thank you for the opportunity. Look forward to working with the council, the community, and the fellow teammates. Thank you.
Thrilled to have you. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am pleased to introduce Marco Romagnoli. He's joined the Community Development Department team as a planning technician. So Marco is joining us from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, where he graduated with a bachelor's degree in city and regional planning in 2018 and also worked for the university as a project planner analyst, starting in 2017. In his job at Cal Poly, Marco supported both the long-range and current planning operations with notable roles in the development of the campus's master plan, capital improvement plans, and sequoia efforts. So Marco grew up in South San Francisco and is excited to be living much closer to his friends and family back home. And in his free time, he likes to grow exotic peppers with which he has fun developing and refining his own hot sauce recipe. He also loves talking football, so we're very happy to have Marco on board. Welcome, Marco.
Thank you. Exciting to be here.
Marco, I have to ask, who's your favorite football team?
I'm a Raiders fan, but I'll talk football with anyone.
Good choice, Eric. That's our house, too. How funny.
Bad choice.
I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I'll introduce our two new police officers. We're pretty fortunate that we're still able to attract experienced officers. So we have two of our new officers that both have worked at other departments. I'll start off with Ricardo Samora. He was hired on March 15th, and he comes to us from the Stockton Police Department. He was born and raised in Salinas, and in 2014 attended the academy and shortly after recruited by the Stockton Police Department. While at Stockton, he worked as a patrol officer and left as a child abuse detective. And his area of specialty was crimes against children prior to coming to us. He held collateral duties as a CPR first aid instructor, a hostage negotiator, and a member of the Mobile Fuel Force for five years. On his spare time, he likes being a mentor to his younger brother, traveling, and trying new food at new restaurants. And I both are here. Hopefully, they're able to log on with new issues. Ricardo, are you on?
I'm not sure. I don't see the name in the attendee list. Is there another name they may be logged on under?
Maybe Jason Kalabowski.
I'm not.
Okay, well, hopefully we're able to log on here. I'll move on to Officer Elliot Terrell. And we took Elliot from the Scotts Valley Police Department. He was born and raised in the city of Monterey, went to college at Monterey Peninsula, and also Cal State Long Beach, where he earned a BA in Business Administration. He worked at the Monterey County Emergency Communications Center for approximately eight months as a dispatcher prior to becoming a police officer. And he began his career in Scotts Valley, was there for approximately seven years. His assignment to Scotts Valley were patrol, investigations, explorer coordinator, a field training officer, and he was also spent some time as an acting sergeant. During his spare time, Elliot enjoys taking his dog on walks on the beach and taking care of his two-year-old son, which takes a good significant amount of his spare time. Elliot looks forward to working for us, and I think I see Elliot on now, and Ricardo should be right behind him. Anything you'd like to share, Elliot, with council?
Just, I appreciate this opportunity, and I look forward to my future with the City of Gilroy and the Gilroy Police Department.
Thank you. Wouldn't you put Ricardo on so council can meet him?
Good evening, everybody. Sorry about that. We're having some technical difficulties, but just like Officer Terrell mentioned, thank you guys for the opportunity. We look forward to working with you guys in the near future and serving the community as best we can.
Thank you both, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any others, Jimmy? No. Okay. All right. Ceremonial items, we have none. Presentations to the council. This is the time for public comment on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Shawna, do we have any public comments?
If you would like to make a public comment at this item, please press star nine on your phone or raise your hand using the raise your hand icon now. Madam Mayor, we have Jan Guffey. And we're bringing her in now. Okay. Jan, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. So at first, I wanted to thank you for all your service to our city. And really just wanted to say that I know you're working on helping our unhoused neighbors and friends who are out on the streets. And I just wanted to voice my my support for that effort, for whatever efforts that are based in compassion and long-range goals.
Jan, we're not hearing you very well.
In order to help our unhoused people here in Gilroy that are on the street. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry, I'll stop my video. That sometimes helps. Sorry, is that better?
It is.
I just repeat what I just said. It's short.
Okay, we heard.
I just wanted to say. Thank you to all of you for your service to our city, and also I just wanted to voice my support of any efforts you are making for unhoused neighbors and friends who are on the street in Gilroy. And thank you for the compassionate response that you have to those people.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Shawna, are there any others?
I don't see any others. If you would like to make a comment during this portion of the agenda, please raise your hand using the icon or the star nine on your phone keypad now. Madam Mayor, there are no other public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. I'm still seeing the last public commenter. Okay. All right. Moving on to reports of council members. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Bracco.
Nothing to report.
All right, Councilmember Armandaris.
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
Just one quick item from Gilroy Gardens. They'll be opening up May 22nd. It'll be celebrating the 20th year anniversary on June 15th, which happens to be the birthday of Michael Bonfanti. And they plan on opening Water Oasis on June 15th, also depending on what tier we're in. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mary Blakely. I want to let union members know that work for the City of Gilroy to know that speaking up at a union, as a union member during the City of Gilroy council meetings is a safe space for you. When you identify speaking as a union member, you aren't representing yourself as a City of Gilroy employee. You can speak up here and in my office without the fear of retaliation. My office will also be hosting a town hall via Zoom this Thursday, and if you want any details, you can please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, that I will have to talk about the beginning of that. This isn't the place for council. That wasn't a council member report. Councilmember La Romagnos.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick items. One, I wanted to congratulate Dynamic Customs. The mayor and I were both there a couple of Fridays ago. Took us a little effort to find it, but we got there. All good, but I wanted to welcome them to the City of Gilroy. Great to see another new business opening. The second item is that the Mobility Partnership, which as people know, is a group of Santa Clara County and San Benito County leaders that works on regional transportation issues. Just last week, we submitted a letter to our representative Jimmy Panetta for a $5 million appropriation or application, I should say, on the Highway 25 101 interchange project. He is putting together his fiscal year 2022 appropriations process packaging. So that is something that we did get our application in for, and I wanted to let people know that we are attempting our best to move that project forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And my report is on, I've got three things. One is that we have a meeting coming up with the Sharks. We're moving forward and hopefully going to have something to bring back to the city council to give some parameters of what it is we might be looking at. Measure B, the last BTA Board meeting is getting somewhere. It's not perfect, but at least the board approved an allocation of the Measure B funds, the 10-year outlook that does in fact accommodate all of the pieces of Measure B and is not so front-loaded or excessively weighted towards Bart Phase Two. And lastly, on Thursday, I met with Cal. Well, I didn't meet with Caltrans. I joined a meeting that they asked me to join. They meet every, it's bi-weekly, and they asked me as the mayor to start sitting in on the ones for Santa Clara County. And it's nice because it gives a lot of information. It really shows just how busy they are throughout the county and when they can and can't give however much notice that they can give in advance. That was a large part of the discussions there. So those were my meetings, and I'm going to say something. I just want to make one comment. Councilmember Hilton, I don't think that was appropriate the way you started your report. So we'll get into that maybe a little later, but we don't encourage people to speak out. And certainly, your comments may be your views, but you can't speak for the council in making that kind of encouragement. So, all right, moving on to the consent calendar.
Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, you happened to skip over me. I know I'm not.
Oh, I did? Oh, how did I do that?
I know I'm not the tallest person on this.
No, I'm sorry. Fred, I'm so sorry.
Just a couple of things. I just want to let everybody know that the Homeless Ad Hoc Committee members continue to be in communication with each other and continue to work extremely hard, and we look forward to eventually presenting to the entire council. So I want to thank my fellow community members on there that are doing extremely hard work, and I thank them for everything that they're doing. Second thing, I'm excited to share, and I'm sure many of you have seen it already, that Temple Taproom will be opening up soon where the old Golden State Brewery was. I just met with the owner yesterday. We had a chance to talk, so that's coming up really, really soon. So I can't wait till that opens up as well. And then I also want to again thank our good friend, Mr. Mark Turner, for all the work that he does in meeting with folks who are interested in investing in Gilroy and for always being willing to talk to me when I have questions. So I want to thank him again and everyone from the chamber. That's it. Thank you.
Mayor, pretend. My apologies. All right. Future council initiated agenda items. Are there any items that anyone wishes to raise before I move on to consent calendar? Okay, on the consent calendar, I would like to pull Item B from consent and ask if there's a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar.
So move.
Madam Mayor, we should probably ask for public comment first.
Okay. Is there a public comment on the consent calendar?
If you would like to make a public comment on anything on our consent calendar, please dial star nine on your phone or raise your hand using the raise your hand icon on your computer. I see no public comments at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I'm sorry, there was a motion from, was it Councilmember Tovar, seconded by?
I'll second the approval of Consent A, C, and D.
Very good. All right. Roll call.
Rebecca Armandaris. Yes. Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Pedro La Romoños.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Murray Blakely.
Yes. Okay, so I asked to pull Item B because I thought it would be a good time for Jimmy to maybe give a verbal report on that. This is report for the public. This is report on lease and rental payments for city-owned properties, for everyone to hear exactly where we are as a city in the landlord position that we are in with our properties. All right, Jimmy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This report is really based on the idea of transparency and that the four tenants that you see listed below are in different phases and different financial abilities to pay their rent on a timely manner. And we've made some arrangements with these groups that are unable to, understanding the COVID-19 had a big impact on, especially on restaurants and golf courses. And so we'll be working with them to continue to do everything we can to keep them open and also understanding that we have an obligation to report to the public the financial terms of which we're dealing with. So we certainly, when everything gets back to fully open, will be working on repayment terms of these particular businesses.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments or want to say anything about the report?
No questions or comments? I would move approval of the report, I guess.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Tovar.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilmember La Romagnos. I just do have a quick question for Jimmy. Jimmy, thank you for that report. I guess my question is in regards to city-owned properties in regards to tenants that may have not been, who have not paid sort of their leases. Have we been in communication with them, or more importantly, have they been in communication with the city in regards to what their plans are to moving forward and making sure that they catch up with their payments?
Yes, Mr. Tovar, the answer to your question is yes and yes. It's been collaborative. We both understand where we're at and where we need to be. There's no surprises here for many of these businesses, and I expect that we'll all end up fine in the end, but we're just trying to get through this right now. So we have a very good relationships with all of our tenants.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, what I think we're seeing is that, you know, restaurants were clearly one of the hardest hits. And in the case where the City of Gilroy is the tenant, is the landlord for a restaurant, we're seeing that that's where, you know, almost a year of no payments at all. So a little more than a year, actually. Okay, so go. Yes, Councilmember Armandaris.
Thank you, Mayor. Jimmy, I noticed there's no interest rates or anything like that or back payment like fees on any of these properties. Is that true, or did I miss something?
No, we haven't reported the actual, you know, fees or things like that, and that's the kind of things we'll negotiate when we get into repayment plan. As you can see, one of the numbers is pretty large. It's going to take a while, and we also don't want to get silly with, you know, real large fees. We most likely would charge what the going interest rate is, which isn't real high right now. So it's something we will factor into it.
And if if a restaurant or one of our less fees can't make that, we can make further arrangements, and you'll bring that information back to us, or you'll just negotiate it on your own?
Most likely, I would negotiate it due to the fact that it's unpaid rent. Much like we'd administer any other kind of rent payments, city staff handles that.
Okay, because I would hate to see any of these shut down or for us to lose a tenant or, you know, an anchor like Old City Hall from our downtown because of something that was out of their control. Thank you.
Okay.
I mean, no, I don't know if we can have further discussion regards to that, which I understand and respect what Councilmember Armandaris is saying. Obviously, I mean, we want to make sure that, and I think, you know, like what was just mentioned, it's been over a year that certain business has not paid. I understand that it's difficult times, but we also have to keep in mind that, you know, once things get back to normal, I have the expectation that those payments are going to be made. And yes, we don't want to lose any of the tenants. But if, you know, if we have tenants that aren't paying, and eventually if there's somebody else that is willing and wants to get into whatever space and, you know, and pay us. I mean, basically, then that's something that we have to have a discussion about. Again, I don't want to see any tenants leave any businesses or restaurants, but we have to be fair when it comes to paying us back. I mean, I think that's bottom line. When the time's right, we really need to make sure we follow through with that.
Okay, I know, I know, Councilmember Armandaris, but may I ask, please, that this was just supposed to present to us the status of where we are. It's really not meant to be critiquing, I guess. We haven't even, Jimmy hasn't even been addressing it yet. We just now, this is where we are. He's going to be looking into what kind of repayment plan he's going to structure. If there are problems or anything that has to go back to council, that will be the time to discuss it. But for now, can we just accept that this is what it is? And we're very, I mean, we're fortunate that it's one tenant of ours and not more that is this much in arrears. Would that be all right?
Mayor, I was just going to point out that in the report, it says that our tenant with the largest amount of back pay due has already started paying back their rent on a regular basis.
Well, just last month. Right, one. Yeah, that's right. Right. They said about 13 months, and then they just now started.
And they kept lots of folks employed, so.
Right.
Appreciate them.
Well, okay. All right. Do I have a motion now to accept this, this Councilmember La Romagnos? Great. And a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Tovar. Okay, roll call.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Hi.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Pedro La Romoños.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Murray Blakely.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes unanimously. All right, unfinished, public hearings done, bits of proposals done, unfinished business. Standing report on operational impacts and other city efforts related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And for this, we have Maria De Leon, Mark Turner, and Chief Wyatt. There you guys are.
All right. We're kind of low right here.
I know. You look like just your eyes are over.
Let me put it down a little bit lower. Okay. Here we go. Hello, everyone. My name is Maria De Leon, and I'm the program administrator going to be presenting with you today along with President of the Chamber of Commerce, Mark Turner. I'm going to share with you my screen. Is that okay? Okay. So tonight, I'm going to give you a quick update on the second round of CARES Act Small Business Grants. So for this round, the city partnered with the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce for a distribution of around $125,000 in $5,000 and $10,000 small business grants. So this new partnership began this past February, and we really wanted to work with a local organization whose goals included the thriving, having a thriving business environment, creating a local strong economy, and having a large database of local businesses. So we've been partnering with the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce on this grant program for around two months now. And so far, it's been a very positive experience. They've been very efficient. Their submissions are always on time and complete, and they're very responsive, and they use their business network to reach out to as many businesses as possible so they could submit applications. So as a partner with the City of Gilroy, the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce had seven responsibilities. had seven responsibilities. So now I'm going to turn this part of the presentation or at least this slide over to Chamber of Commerce President Mark Turner, who will elaborate on what they're accountable of doing. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Maria, and thank you to the city for allowing us this opportunity to partner on this program. It's been actually a really good program. We've had the ability to reach out to a number of various businesses that were unable to participate in the first round. And so it has worked out really well. From a business outreach standpoint, we were able to, to reach the business community through our e-newsletter, through Facebook, Instagram, these are all chamber, social media platforms, LinkedIn. We also worked through the Gilroy Dispatch and also Gilroy Life. And so we got a great, uh, really sort of an effort to get out into the, into the business community and reached a pretty large audience. And we had a good response on that. And I'll give you some of those numbers here in just a second. From an application support standpoint, we provided information in both English and Spanish. And we assisted, in some cases, we assisted applicants who came to the Chamber Office. I even helped one of the business owners apply for a DUNES number. We just handled that all here. We scanned information. And so whatever support we can provide to the local businesses who are applying, we just went ahead and did so in order to make sure that they had all that they needed in order to provide the information for the grant process. Confirming the CDVG eligibility, 51% of the employees had to be in a low-income category. We were able to confirm that based on the documents of the forms that we had that were provided to us from the city that we then provided to the local businesses. And they were able to determine based on income levels meeting that 51% requirement. From a collection of the required documentation, we basically did a lot of emails. We had a good response from our initial e-blast and all of the information that we put out through the dispatch and Gilroy Life. We then made phone calls, did follow-up emails and whatever source of communication we need in order to make these connections and continue to communicate with these businesses in order to help them get the information provided and then get those packages submitted. From a verification of those submissions, we would confirm all the necessary documents to ensure the final review by the city was, was quick and efficient. If there was any information we were uncertain of, we were able to speak with both Maria and Robert Carrera in order to confirm the documentation and what was needed. And they've been very responsive. It's been a great partnership. And they've been a great support to us and everything that we've needed from them. So from an administration's administrative support, again, we would do printing and scanning of documents. Like I said, I hope one of our business owners applied for a DUNES number and whatever they needed in order to get the information and we helped them with that. We maintain a project checklist. We just created a checklist that we put on top of every application. We could just quickly scan that to see what people needed to submit. We were able to follow up with businesses to make sure if they just had one or two documents left, we could find out what that was, get that from them and then get, get their application package submitted to the city. Once we had all of the information, we would just put it together based on the checklist, list everything out, scan it, send it to the city. And at that point, both Maria and Robert would do their part to quite quickly approve or give us feedback based on what else might be needed. But for the most part, we had submitted 17 completed packages. Twelve of them were approved. The five that were rejected simply came down to the fact that three of them, which we didn't catch on the initial, on the initial phase, was that they had received funding from the first round, so they were not eligible in the second round. And then two of those other businesses did not comply simply because they did not meet some of the minimum standards, which were, for the most part, they needed a minimum of two employees. And so those two didn't, didn't qualify. Again, working with the city was very easy and very helpful in that regard. Once the packages were submitted, we would get within 24 hours, information showing approval. We would then let the businesses know. And then the city did some follow-up communication with those businesses, providing one last form and then getting checks cut. We would meet weekly with the city staff to go over any of the questions or any concerns that we had. They would also provide information to us based on our need. And actually, it was a very smooth process. Here's some statistics I just wanted to run by you. We, to this point, had received 42 applications. Seventeen were submitted, 12 were approved, as I mentioned, the five that were rejected for the reasons that they were. Six of those applications were approved at the $5,000 level and six were approved at the $10,000 level. Of those 12, seven of those were minority or women-owned businesses. We have 25 applications in process. Twenty of those 25 are minority or women-owned. And of those 25, four of those applications are near completion. Of the 125,000, we have 90,000 that have been approved. There's about 35,000 left in this second round.
Mark, do you have that on another slide? That information that you just shared?
I, I don't, but I could, I could send it out in an email form if you're interested in having it.
Thank you.
Sure. And would I send that to mayor, would I send it to all the council members or how would you like that?
Go ahead and just send it to all the council members. Yeah, I would have preferred we, yeah, wait till, okay. Is it, Marie, are you continuing from here or is it still with Mark?
I'm done.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, so we go to the next slide. Last slide. So this contains council member Armandaris, this contains some of the information that you requested. So, um, so in round one, some of you may remember that we distributed through the CARES Act funding $310,000 in small business grants, which helped 46 businesses. I remember council member Bracco asked us the question and I know Mark Turner already answered it, but there was a distribution of 30 of them were $5,000 grants and 16 of them were $10,000 grants. And so round two, to date, Mr. Turner mentioned, you know, 90,000 in business grants have already been distributed, helping and supporting 12 businesses and $35,000 left to distribute. So there's around 25 businesses still left in the queue. So there's still much more to do. And then round three, which is a potential of of an additional $100,000 for small business grants and CARES money. So in May, city council will see staff recommendations for the next round of CARES Act funds. A portion of that will be set aside for economic development efforts such as small business grants. And so we feel confident that, and so does the Chamber of Commerce feels confident that they could distribute the remaining funds with the folks and the businesses that are on the waiting list. So this concludes my update and with Mr. Turner and we are both here able to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, is Chief Wyatt still here? Is he giving a report too?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I believe.
I'm going to thank, thank the both of you for that very much. Oh, good. There is, there is Chief Wyatt. So I don't see any hands raised, so we'll continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to give a quick update on the COVID vaccination program that the fire department has been participating in. For the past couple, past three weeks, we've been performing in-home vaccinations through our mobile vaccination unit. As a result of that, we've been able to vaccinate about 20 to 25, probably about 25 this week. People who otherwise would be unable to make any of our vaccination centers. We've been greeted very well with, with this program and we continue to get phone calls coming in from residents who want to know if they can, if they qualify and if we can go out and serve their needs as well. In addition to that, we've been providing vaccines to the senior center as well as the parking lot at the Gilroy High School for disabled people, curbside service. So we're, we're fitting, we're fit, we're filling a gap of need out there for people that are unable to easily go to any of our, our various city vaccination centers. Along with that, we, we anticipate that we'll continue to provide the, the mobile in-home vaccination for a while. The numbers seem to be going down, which is a good thing that we're meeting the needs and probably close to about 30 people citywide have been requiring the service, maybe an estimate up to 50. Some people who we've reached out to, it turns out that they were able to find another means to get to the vaccination center. But irregardless, we're, we're there, we're here to serve you. And I just want to do a quick reminder that we're not out of the woods yet, even though we're seeing greater and greater numbers of people receiving the vaccine. We also need to remind people to wear their masks, to still provide social distancing. And we anticipate that as we all collectively work together, that we'll get a greater portion of our city residents vaccinated within the next couple of months. And I'm, I'll stand by for any questions.
All right, thank you, Chief. I'd like to go to public comment, actually, Sean, if you have anybody from the public who's wanting to speak on this?
If you would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand using these raise your hand icon or dial star nine on your telephone keypad now. Madam Mayor, we have no public comments at this time.
Okay, council, are we ready to move on or is there more, more questions? Okay, moving on then to item B, adoption of an amendment to the economic development incentive policy for business attraction and expansion of automotive dealerships. Karen, I believe you're giving this report.
I am. Thank you very much. I'm going to pull up my slides here. Okay. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, well, good evening, Mary Blakely and members of the council. Karen Corner with the Community Development Department. The request before you is to adopt an amendment to the economic development incentive policy and specifically for the business attraction and expansion of automotive dealerships. This amendment results from council's previous direction to enhance economic development in the city of Gilroy and more specifically to update the economic incentive policy. This amendment also supports council's recent confirmation of citywide goals, including the goal to focus on revenue-driven economic development. So why automotive dealers in particular? Well, mainly because a handful of automotive dealers generate a significant portion of the city's sales tax revenue, which goes into the general fund. Encouraging the growth of existing dealers and attracting new dealerships will boost the city's sales tax revenue and thus general fund revenue. Auto dealers also provide, provide jobs in a desirable niche, which is good wages that don't usually require a four-year degree. And as you can see, they do hire quite a few employees and according to some information for California dealerships, the average annual earnings of employees is over $72,000. There are also ongoing indirect economic impacts with customers returning for service and the dealership relying often on local or regional businesses to provide various services. It's also important that we don't lose existing dealerships. It'd be very difficult to make up the sales tax revenue that's lost from even one of our dealerships. And even if the dealerships never participate in the program, if one of our existing dealerships weren't to participate, the goodwill generated by offering such a program goes a long way in retaining these important businesses and can help prevent them from going to competitor cities. So the incentive policy, the full text of the amendment is in your staff report, but I just wanted to highlight a few of the key points. And that is that dealers receive a rebate of a portion of their sales tax that's generated. So the total rebates does not exceed what we calculate as the city fees and the cost of any required off-site improvement. So as part of this, we look at those, what's the cost of the fees, what's the cost of the offsite improvements? And their rebate will not exceed that. The maximum term would be 20 years and in many cases, it may even be less. And the rebate is based on performance above and beyond what we established as a minimum baseline. And the minimum baseline is what we would expect that dealership with that brand in a similar market to make. So we know what the sale should be and any rebate is going to be based on what they generate sales-wise above and beyond that baseline. And it would be a percentage split of that sales tax generated above and beyond that baseline. So if the dealer does not exceed that baseline, they would not get a rebate for that time period. And then just to overview the process is we would require an in-depth analysis that the dealership would provide and staff would probably augment. We would review all this information and again, determine things like how many jobs they're going to provide? What are the wages of those jobs? What are the property tax? And then their estimated sales as well, what we think they're going to generate to the city for sales tax. Then we would draft an incentive agreement based on the specifics of that project. And that agreement would come to council for review and approval. So again, every agreement is going to be a little bit different and unique based on the specific needs of that project and every agreement will come to council for review and approval. And then some key points about the structure of the agreement is again, the city keeps 100% of all sales tax revenue that's generated on what we estimate as the baseline amount. It's only the portion above and beyond that baseline that we would split with the dealership. And we would determine what that percentage split is. It may be 50/50. It may be the city gets 60 and dealership 40. That would all be part of that individual agreement. And again, the maximum term would also be part of that agreement and no more than 20 years. So just to kind of run through an example to try and explain it a little bit better. So example, the dealership, we estimate that all of their fees to the city and offsite improvements are going to cost $750,000. So the rebate is going to be up to that amount. And in this example, let's say we're going to pay that out over 15 years. We would provide a 50% split of sales tax revenue above and beyond that baseline that we estimate. And so in this example, again, let's estimate that we think they're going to generate $2 million in annual sales, which is $200,000 in sales tax revenue to the city. That's the baseline. If the dealership actually ends up generating two and a half million dollars in annual sales or $250,000 of sales tax revenue to the city, if we were to look at that over the course of 15 years, you know, if that's exactly how much they made for all of those 15 years, they would get a rebate of $397,500 and the city would retain the rest. And even if we extended that out to 20 years, they would get a rebate of $522,500. And again, that is their portion of the rebate. In this case, they did not even get to the $750,000 maximum that they could have received. But after, you know, when, when they reach that total maximum rebate or if they reach the end of the term, it ends and they do not receive any more funds from the city. And then this slide uses a different baseline example, but it's really intended to just demonstrate how the total sales tax revenue generated would be split between the city and the dealership in one year. And this is based on if the dealership generated $120,000 in sales tax revenue. And we determined that the baseline that the city would receive is $75,000. So everything above and beyond $75,000 would be split, which would be $22,500 each. So overall, the city's share of sales tax for that year for this dealership is $97,500 and the dealer's share is $22,500. So hopefully that helps explain how that split might work. And again, you know, the baseline, the percentage that we split could all vary, but all of that would be in that agreement that council reviews and approves for each dealership. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
All right, thank you, Karen. I see council member Marks with her hand raised. All right. Thank you, Karen. I see Councilmember Marks with her hand raised.
Councilmember.
I'm sorry. I know. I'm sorry. I was going to ask a question, but then Karen answered it right afterwards and I forgot to lower it. So.
All right. Then Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you, Mayor. So Karen, when does the, the amount captured, is it the of, of what the baseline will be, is that in the first year when the, when you negotiate with them, what it'll be? It's based on the prior year sales tax? And when do you, what year do you capture that?
No, so the baseline would be determined prior to, that's going to be part of the agreement and that's going to be determined for the entire length of the agreement. We would likely have a slightly different baseline for years one and two, assuming that, you know, it's going to take them a while to get up to speed, to get known, to do their marketing. So but by year three, we assume they're going to be going full bore and, you know, doing as good as they're probably going to do. So year three might have a slightly different baseline amount, but years three through fifteen or three through twenty are all going to have that same baseline amount. So that's all determined upfront. We don't, we don't modify it each year. It's not based on past performance.
Okay, so it's captured year one through three?
It's, the baseline amount is, is spelled out in the agreement for all years of the agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Shauna, I'd like to go to public comment before we continue with council discussion, if there is any.
Certainly. If you would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand using the raise your hand icon or dial star nine now. And Madam Mayor, we have Diana Zhang, I'm not going to probably say this right, Zhang Regui coming in.
Okay.
So hi, my name's Diana Howard again. I'm a resident here in Gilroy.
What happened?
Oh, I don't know. Sorry, my connection is bad where I'm at. Any of those are actual employees that are Gilroy residents? Is there something to track that if these re- are being provided to the dealerships, then how can we assure that most of those employees are Gilroy residents? That's just my.
Okay, um, I'm, I'll try to answer that. We don't, we don't just, we don't dictate what our local businesses from where they have to hire people. I don't know if someone else wants to try to answer this. Otherwise, for me, it's, you know, we did a, it's not even similar. We put ourselves more out for the downtown a few years back, more than a few years, where we forgave all fees in order to encourage investment downtown. If you were going to fix up a building or buy a building downtown and do something really great with it, there would be no city fees at all to do that. And that got us a lot of investment downtown. Nothing is ever enough, it seems. But even with that, we could not then attach to it. But now you're required to put a certain business in there with certain employees from a certain location. So that's not what this is about. This is about trying to attract investment in Gilroy. So it's not for those that are, that are here and just staying as they are, but new auto dealers or ones looking to expand. Okay.
Can I comment on that? We would certainly encourage them to hire locally, but you're, you're correct in your statement. And ways we might do that is we might put the dealership in touch with local job fairs, either through Gavelin College or through the Chamber of Commerce and help them, you know, hook up with local resources so we can make sure that they give local residents the best chance to get those jobs.
Great. Shauna, are there any other public comments?
Madam Mayor, there are no other public comments at this time.
Okay, so then I'm going to go back to council and I'm going to start with Councilmember LaRoma Yost, followed by Councilmember Braco, and then followed by Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and the last question actually kind of segues nicely into mine. You know, certainly we would encourage, and I'm glad to see that, that Karen, you're going to be encouraging those auto dealers to, to hire locally and, and just the, the presence, though, in and of themselves of more employees is still an economic benefit in and of itself to the city through people, you know, shopping here, you know, getting lunch or dinner or whatever. So, but we certainly do want to see those, those of our, our local residents having a, having a good shot at getting those jobs. But Karen, just so I'm clear in terms of looking at the report here. Again, just to be clear, it, it seems that there are no numerical requirements or thresholds with regard to, you know, jobs being produced or anything like that in terms of, of requirements or criteria that have to be met for this, for this rebate. Is that correct?
That is correct because every dealership's going to be a little bit unique. So it's hard to put too many specifics. And so each one's on a case-by-case basis. You know, we, we, like I said, we're not going to exceed the rebate amount based on what they've spent for fees and permits and offsite improvements. That's one thing we can put a hard cap on. The total length of the terms, twenty years, we, you know, we can put a hard cap on that. So there are some things we can do and, but we would look at, so like I said, the, the data I have that shows, you know, here's the average number of jobs. If they come in with a very much lower number, we're going to question that and ask them, well, why is your number so much lower than what the average is? And, you know, we would expect an explanation for that.
Totally understood. Great. Thank you for, for confirming that for me.
All right, Councilmember Braco.
Yes, to answer the lady's question, as someone that's worked in auto dealers in my earlier life, most of the employees are locally. I work with many of the dealerships here in town. And all their technicians are mainly Gilroy residents. And these are not jobs that you can just call the local job fair to get. These guys are highly trained technicians that work years to perfect their perfection. So thank you.
Okay. And I, I'd like to point out that since I don't see any other hands raised, I mean, there is the threshold of the sales tax that they need to generate. Okay, Councilmember, your hand was gone and now.
Yeah, I went, I didn't put it down. I don't know what happened. Go ahead, the mayor. Yeah.
The threshold of sales tax, of course, is there, which is what makes this very different than what the then city council did for downtown, was that was just forgiving the fees. This is, it's not, it's not forgiving fees. It's, it's returning some of the, so we get a hundred thousand dollars in sales tax. And then we say fifty thousand goes back. So we're still ahead fifty thousand dollars. That's very different, you know, than what we did with the downtown. I also want to share with members of the public too, who might not realize that when we say that the car dealers are, are, are bigger sales tax generator, what we mean is like per entity. It takes like, it's a, say, nine dealerships generate three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, I mean, generate three million dollars of sales tax, which is almost three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars each versus five million coming to the city from two-hundred-plus retail dealers, which is about twenty-five-thousand dollars each. So twenty-five thousand compared to the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, that's what we mean by the magnitude of why every city wants auto dealers in their city. And that's what we're trying to compete against. So those are my comments. Okay, Councilmember Armandares, you, you have your hand.
Are those actual numbers? Because that was one of my questions is what is the actual number of employees for our local dealerships? And what's the actual number of average sales tax, you know, over the last five years generated by these auto dealers? And can we incentivize local hiring the way that we're incentivizing them staying here and developing here? Is that something we could write into this incentive program? Those are my questions.
Well, I could help with that, Ms. Armandares. First of all, over the last five years, we've seen growth around ten percent annually from dealership sales tax. We're not permitted to give you specific dealer sales tax information, but I, I can assure you that the number has been climbing, especially the last five years. It's gone down last year due to COVID nineteen. And we could certainly write a local hiring preference, preference into any plan you have. My only concern with that is how do we monitor and enforce it? It would be a lot to do, but I certainly would understand why that would be attractive for council to consider.
Okay, so is your hand? Councilmember Armandares, your hand is still left. Do you still have a question? No. Okay. Are there, oh, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you to my colleague, Councilmember Armandares for that question. It's, it's a, it's a really good point. So one of the things I've done over the years is I've actually, and, 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 Councilmember Braco was correct. You know, many, many of the jobs that they hire are highly trained. But that didn't stop me from meeting with many of the auto dealers and expressing my desire, my, you know, my wish for them to hire local residents. So yeah, I agree with what you're saying. And I also took a pound myself to go and speak with them directly and say that this is what we hope for. Any local business that they're going to hire Gilroy residents first. So thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
All right. Is anybody ready to make a motion to adopt an amendment?
So moved.
Okay. Okay, Dion, were you trying to get in there?
That's fine. He could do it.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember LaRoma Yost. A motion to adopt an amendment to the economic development incentive policy, allowing sales tax rebates to offset development costs of new and expanding automotive dealerships. Roll call vote.
Eka Armandares? Yes. Dion Braco?
Yes.
Zach Hilton?
Yes.
Peter LaRoma Yost?
Yes.
Carol Marks?
Yes.
Fred Tovar?
Yes.
Marie Blankley?
Yes, that passes unanimously. All right, introduction of new business. Discontinuance of temporary pay reduction for Gilroy Management Association and discontinuance of temporary pay reduction and freeze on merit increases for unrepresented, non-exempt confidential employees, unrepresented exempt confidential employees, unrepresented department heads, council-appointed employees and part-time, temporary, seasonal, hourly and exempt employees. Leann McPhillips, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council and Gilroy community. Since July of 2020, management and unrepresented employees have experienced a nine-point-two-three percent pay reduction in exchange for sixteen hours of additional paid leave each month. This was implemented to achieve payroll savings needed to balance the city's budget as a result of the COVID nineteen recession. This payroll concession was in addition to the elimination of a previously approved three percent wage increase that was to be effective on July one of 2020. In addition, as you all know, the organization experienced significant layoffs in July and August of 2020, which resulted in a lower number of staff available to provide much-needed services to the community. More recently, however, as a result of replacement funding for local government agencies associated with the American Rescue Plan Act, returning management and unrepresented employees to full-time work is an immediate priority that will grant us additional staff time. And these employee groups make up approximately forty-three employees. And they were the only groups that experienced the nine-point-two-three percent pay cut and the reduced work schedule. It is estimated that over six-hundred-and-eighty-five hours per month of productive work time will be restored through the elimination of the pay reduction program effective April first of 2021. The pay reduction program is also important to note that it's making it difficult to fill vacant management and unrepresented positions. The applicant pool for some of these positions has been small and candidates have withdrawn from the hiring process citing the reduced pay as an issue. In addition, the inability to advance within the established pay range based on the employee's job performance has been another issue impacting recruitment and retention for the categories of unrepresented employees. React, reactivating the ability for employees to earn merit-based increases within their established salary range is, it's really important to maintaining stability in the city's workforce. Staff is recommending that merit increases within the established pay range be reactivated effective July one, 2021 for unrepresented employees. The fiscal year twenty-one general fund cost tied to ending the pay reduction additional paid leave program effective April first, 2021. So that's three months, April one, 2021 through June thirty, 2021, is approximately a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. The full year of fiscal year twenty-two general fund cost associated with the elimination of these concessions is estimated to be five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. Staff recommends that the city council approve and authorize the city administrator to execute the necessary, necessary documents to end the pay reduction additional paid leave program for management and unrepresented employees effective April one, 2021, and to approve and authorize the city administrator to execute the necessary documents to reactivate performance-based merit increases for all unrepresented employees effective July first, 2021. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any council members with questions before I go to public comment? All right, Shauna, can we see if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. If you would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand using the raise your hand icon or dial star nine now. And we have Julie Wirick joining us.
Okay. Julie, are you there? Julie, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I am speaking to you as the president of the Gilroy Management Association. I want to say that we are supportive of the consideration of discontinuing the pay reduction and associated furlough days for our membership. We would like to take this opportunity to note that the Gilroy Management Association also conceded our three percent negotiated wage increase as of July first, 2020. And as is stated in the staff report, the pay reduction and inability to advance within the established pay range has made it challenging to fill vacant management positions and foregoing the cost of living increases, especially when management has taken on more responsibilities with less pay in less time, has taken its toll on the managers that are still here, especially when other bargaining groups did not take similar concessions. The GMA leadership would like to meet as soon as possible when the sales tax, sales tax revenue numbers are published, understanding the ongoing impact to the city's budget. Per our side letter agreement, we're supposed to meet every six months to review city revenues and expenditures to determine whether to roll back concessions or explore the need for any additional expenditure reductions to the extent feasible. We would not like to wait until 2022 to do so. I'd like to do that sooner. We have proven to be a willing partner with the city and would like to continue that relationship. Thank you.
Thank you and understood. Any, okay, wait, are there any other public comments? And then I'll go to Councilmember Tovar.
Madam Mayor, there are no other public comments at this time.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Phillips and our city manager for bringing this forward. I think it's long overdue, so I would like to move for approval.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right. Well, if, if there's no further discussion, I just want to ask, are, are we on a schedule to, to revisit these items like that the caller was asking? We are, are we not?
Yes, we are continuing to meet with council in closed session to discuss further developments related to the city's budget and revenue as it relates to our employee bargaining groups.
Right. Great. Great. Okay. All right. Well, we have a motion. I'm sorry, it was by, who made the motion?
Councilmember Tovar.
Tovar, seconded by Councilmember LaRoma Yost.
Correct.
Okay. Shauna, do you want to read the motion? Because it's long. Or just do a roll call?
Um, I can, we can read the motion if you'd like. We can certainly do that.
If you don't need to, that's fine.
I suggest, I think it would be adequate to simply say the motion is to approve the three amendments that are noted, that are described in, in the agenda. I think that would be adequate.
Very good. There it is.
All right, this is a roll call vote. Rebecca Armandares. Yes. Dion Braco?
Yes.
Zach Hilton?
Yes.
Peter LaRoma Yost?
Yes.
Carol Marks?
Yes.
Fred Tovar?
Yes.
Marie Blankley?
Yes. Little by little, we inch our way back. All right. Item B, appointment to a vacant seat on the planning commission with a term ending December thirty-one, 2022. I am sorry, everyone, we're in this position again, but we had someone else resign just three months after we just went through this process. So staff report, Shauna, please.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, as the mayor has just stated, we have one vacancy following our last recruitment or annual recruitment process that was held. And in the month of December, we had the council fill and interview people. And you made those appointments on your January fourth meeting. Since that time, one member of the planning commission has resigned. His seat still has two years left in it. And so what we did was And so what we did was, um, at the mayor's direction, we brought back all applicants who were interested in the Planning Commission at that time, it certainly made sense. And, um, though some of them have been appointed to other advisory bodies of the city, uh, we do have the opportunity to allow you to, um, certainly appoint any of these members, and then we would, um, fill those, those subsequent vacancies as necessary. Um, so, uh, again, we do have, uh, seven applicants, um, and Suzanne is letting all those applicants, we did invite them to this evening's, um, Zoom meeting, and those that were available are available here to answer any questions you may have of them. And your applications, um, should have been in your packet material, and, um, I've, I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, sounds like all seven of them are here with us tonight. So, um, I'll go ahead and let each of them, you know, speak for about two minutes. Uh, they're, they are the same applicants, um, and even though some of them may now be sitting on a new commission, by the fact that they're here tonight, they're saying they would rather be on the Planning Commission. So I'd like everybody on the council to remember, to keep that in mind, um, when you're, when we're going through these, and it's only one seat and it's only for two years. Okay?
Madam Mayor, yes, we have five of the applicants here, uh, two that are not here are Ian Brusahoff and Scott Lucas. Okay, those two are in the attendees and please press star nine now on your phone, or raise your hand via the icon. It looks like we have just those five, thank you.
Very good. Well, then let's, I'm gonna, the order I have is Chris, Kathy, Allison, Ismael, and Adeline. So why don't we let them in in that order?
And we actually have them all in right now. If you call one by name, they can unmute themselves.
Okay. Ian, why don't you go ahead, a couple of minutes, uh, literally two minutes each? And, uh, just tell us, tell us again, um, you know, if you're happy on the commission that you're on, great. Otherwise, uh, let us know why you'd like to be on the Planning Commission.
Um, Ian is not here.
Oh, sorry, Chris, you, you said that, right, Chris?
No problem, Mayor Blankley, and, um, nice to be in the, in the company of yourself and the council, uh, members again. I, um, was one of the individuals, uh, who was not selected the first time around to the Planning Council, uh, Planning Commission, and, um, put in my application for the Building Board of Appeals, which I would be happy to serve on. But simply because, um, you know, i- if it is, uh, uh, a, a commission that would have, um, much greater involvement, that is, uh, the Planning Commission much, be much more active, um, in terms of, um, things that, uh, I can do, uh, for the community versus, um, an appeals board. I think I would prefer, um, being on, uh, the Planning, uh, Commission. But again, I, I, I want to serve the, the community. Um, uh, I think all of you have probably seen my resume for these two commissions. I don't know that I need to go into a lot of detail on that. I know the first time around when I talked about, uh, the Planning Commission, I had mentioned my, um, interest in, in, in smart growth and, and really promoting that in the community. I think I had a, um, a lot of similar interest to other people who were candidates in terms of things that, that I saw, um, helpful to improve. But one other thing, I guess I would point out that maybe I didn't have a chance to point out the first time around, um, is through some of my work, um, through my government service, um, I do have, uh, a lot of strength in, uh, analysis, like cost-benefit analysis, which I know can come in helpful when you are looking at, um, balancing things such as the prosperity of the community, the equitable nature, uh, of a given investment, and the sustainable nature of that, um, uh, investment too. And so some of the tools that I bring, um, such as that, I, I guess I would just, um, take the opportunity to emphasize. But again, happy to answer any questions, um, happy to serve on the Building, uh, Board of Appeals. But again, if I can be much more active in terms of the kinds of things I can do to, um, move the, uh, community along, I guess I would prefer to be on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, that's the two-minute mark there. Okay, uh, thank you, Chris. I'm gonna wait and see if the council has any particular question. Okay, Councilmember Tovar, I just want to make sure we ask the same question of, of all of them because we, we just went, went through this, so I don't know how much we want to go into, but go ahead. If it's a question we can ask of all of them.
Yeah, no, yeah, it would be a question I asked to all of them. Uh, Chris, I just, thank you for, uh, your interest, but in your, um, application, you mentioned your, uh, community involvement, which lists mainly, uh, involvement for the city of San Jose. Are there other things that you've done for the city of Gilroy that, um, you've been involved with?
Uh, there have been, um, I've been a resident of the city of, uh, Gilroy for, for less than a year, and I've been active in other communities in which I, uh, lived. Just some of the things, I guess, that I've, uh, done here just in, in recent weeks, um, I organized a, a pickup, uh, uh, of one of, uh, the nearby parks, um, uh, to my, uh, home, which is near, um, uh, the, the corner of Lucesa and, and Thomas, um, to do, um, a cleanup of, of a park, uh, that was, uh, quite dirty, um, in terms of litter nearby us. Uh, but, uh, in all communities I've, I've lived, um, yeah, I've, I, uh, have been active in San Jose as a member of the Human Services Commission, um, as the, uh, member of a, a Community Development, uh, Commission in, um, University Park, Maryland, uh, where I lived. So, um, hope to bring that same energy, um, and, uh, interest in community development here to Gilroy.
Great, thank you, you, you had the second question, my second question was gonna be, if we could share with everybody where exactly you live, but you added that for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris, thank you very much. All right, moving on to Kathy, and Kathy, if in your talk, if you could also just, uh, answer Councilmember Tovar's question, which is just a thing specific to Gilroy, um, if you feel like you haven't already said that in your application.
Oh, okay, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, um, I, um, you had asked about, um, uh, current positions. I'm, um, currently, uh, Library Commissioner, um, finishing up my term, I'll be finishing that at the end of this year. And the reason I am looking to serve on the Planning Commission is I'm always looking for ways to remain involved in our community, and I'd love to serve in this capacity. Um, through my current employment position, I'm very familiar with the planning process with Santa Clara County, and I'd be interested in seeing the other side, um, of the requests for planning and permitting, um, processes. I think Councilwoman Tovar, um, your question was, uh, if you could refresh my memory?
Thank you, yeah, no, and I, I've, I've read your, um, application. I just wanted the public to hear sort of things that you've been involved with, uh, with the city of Gilroy, and also what area of Gilroy do you live in?
Okay, sure, um, again, I, I currently serve as a Library Commissioner. Um, for the Gilroy Unified School Districts, I've, I volunteered to write grants, um, for the middle schools and elementary schools. Um, I've served on the parent clubs for the elementary school. Um, I headed the Literacy Committee for our local, um, elementary school here at Luigi Apprea. Um, and I live on, I guess you would consider it the west side of Gilroy, over by Luigi Apprea.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy, very much, thanks for coming again.
Thank you.
All right, Allison? Allison, are you here?
She had to call in, she's... I just, uh, hit allowed to talk, Allison, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening, oh, great, hi, everyone. Okay, so, um, I'll just first say, I am on the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission with Gary Heap, who I see is also online, and I love it, I'm having a fantastic time so far. I feel like we can certainly do a whole lot for our community, so, but I was, I was, uh, approached by, by Suzanne, so happy to, to also talk about the, the Planning Commission. Um, I have lived in Gilroy for over 21 years, I am an active, I think I'm active in my community. I, I have worshiped at South Valley, New Hope, I support St. Joseph's Family Center, the Compassion Center. And I also feel, I've been tracking a lot of the exchanges on Nextdoor, I saw recently, um, Councilmember Hilton responded to a, a query about development close to Safeway. And I feel there's an opportunity for us to engage the community meaningfully, um, because there's a lot of, of, you know, different feelings around, like homelessness, for example. So I think there's an opportunity for us to engage in some meaningful conversations. And so I, I would want to, to bring that lens if I were to, to serve on the commission. Um, I'm also, so in terms of my qualifications, as I mentioned, I've lived in Gilroy for over 20 years. So I have a vested interest in how this, this community, um, evolves. And I have, uh, an MBA from Santa Clara with a concentration in finance, and I recently received my law degrees also from Santa Clara. And if I'm serving on the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission or Planning Commission, my objective is just to serve the city of Gilroy. And I live close to Christopher High, thanks.
Okay, so, Allison, are you saying that you would, uh, prefer to be on the Planning Commission and give up your seat on bike and ped?
No, you know, if I, if you felt like I, I would be the best candidate for the Planning Commission, then I would give up my seat. But if there are others, then I'm saying that I'm happy serving where I am.
Very good, okay, thank you, thanks very much. Okay, um, Ismael? Are you?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi.
How's it going?
And thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. Um, I, like myself, uh, with Chris, um, I'm also a part of the Building Board of Appeals. I'm, I'm interested in the, in the Planning Committee, um, only because I feel like that it suits my, my skill set, uh, the most. Um, just as a reminder, my background is in hospitality, where I've done, um, some planning involved of opening concepts, planning of events, and then I also, as a general manager and an executive in hospitality, I have intimate knowledge of CUPs and things of that nature. Um, in terms of where I currently live, I'm in the area of Sixth and Miller. Um, and then in regards to what have I done in the community thus far, um, I'm new to the community, and I'm approaching a year in Gilroy as of next week. But I'm actively looking to be, to do more in the community, get more involved, and, um, yeah, and then I'm open to any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tovar, did your question get answered there?
Yes, it did, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, then that leaves us with one more candidate, uh, Adeline, if I'm saying your name right?
Madam Mayor, it looks like she disconnected a short while back, probably after the first interview.
Okay, so meaning she is not here?
Correct.
Okay. All right then, council, do we need to have any, uh, discussion, or, um, is, uh, everybody ready for me to just go ahead and ask you for your choices? Okay, Councilmember Bracco says, let's go on with choices, but, okay, so I'm just gonna go down, um, I'm gonna go down, down the list here, everybody get ready, um, my list has me first, so I'm just gonna say mine first, and I'm, I'm going to, uh, suggest Ismael. Okay, Councilmember Bracco?
Allison.
Okay. Councilmember La Romanos?
Uh, Adeline Moreno?
Okay, Councilmember Marks?
Chris?
Oh my gosh, we are, Councilmember Tovar?
Adeline?
Councilmember Armendaris?
Adeline.
Okay, and Councilmember Hilton?
Adeline.
Okay, phew, all right, so it is, it is Adeline, she got four votes, so that is our new commissioner, and that does not leave a vacancy on any of the other commissions, so. Thank you, those of you who, who came back tonight, I very much appreciate your interest, I really can't thank you enough, um, and hope we do see you again, thank you. Okay. Moving on. Item C. Consideration, oh, did I need to do a roll call vote? I'm sorry, this says roll call vote on the Planning Commission term.
Yes, Madam Mayor, please.
Whoops, okay, so, I need a motion and a second to...
My second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Armendaris, Peter La Romanos made the motion to appoint, um, Adeline Moreno? Yeah. Uh, to a vacant seat on the Planning Commission with the term ending December 31, 2022, roll call vote.
Rebecca Armandaris?
Yes.
Dion Bracco?
Yes.
Zach Hilton?
Yes.
Peter La Romanos?
Yes.
Carol Marks?
Yes.
Fred Tovar?
Yes.
Marie Blankley?
Yes. Okay, item C. Consideration of the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy prohibiting evictions for the non-payment of rent for tenants impacted by COVID-19 emergency and setting forth the facts constituting the need for such relief. Okay, this report will be by Jimmy and Andy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, this, uh, this was requested by Councilmember Armendaris, uh, back in February to return to council for the consideration of a, um, an eviction moratorium. Um, as you may recall, in April of 2020, the city council considered, uh, the, uh, a similar action and, um, voted not to impose, and, and, and a local eviction moratorium, and relate, rely on the county and states, uh, in place moratoriums. Uh, since that time, the, uh, the state and the county have continued to extend, uh, moratoriums for evictions, and most recently, a Senate Bill 91 was approved in February, or actually February 1, 2021, that extended the core tenant protections, uh, of AB 3088 until June 30th, 2021. Uh, so that is the current, uh, lo- local, um, in, in, you know, local policy in place. Uh, the, the state orders do allow for local entities to have stricter or additional provisions as part of their eviction moratorium, uh, included in their ordinances. Uh, the item on council tonight, uh, is essentially, uh, we're bringing it to you as a point of discussion and a, as a, as a starting point for your discussion. Uh, as written, the current, uh, ordinance that is attached to your packet would go into place when the state and county ordinance expires June 30th of this year. However, you can modify, amend, you can reject, uh, any part of that ordinance, and for that reason, that's why we, we gave you that, uh, that draft. Um, I'll, uh, I'll switch over to Andy at this point, who has, like, I'm aware wants to, uh, talk a little bit about the legal aspects of what we're, we're having you consider, and, uh, the challenges, and perhaps, uh, things just to know before you deliberate.
Thank you.
Yes, briefly, um, I've been asked to talk a little bit about the legal status of this. It's a, it's a confusing area, frankly, because there are, there's a county moratorium, which applies to, to businesses also, there's a state moratorium which applies to residential, and essentially preempts a city moratorium until June 30th. There's also a confusing federal moratorium put on by the CDC. Uh, and that was recently extended, in fact, there was an article in the paper about that about a week and a half ago. It was recently extended to June 30th as well, and that's only, only affects residential. Uh, I frankly never quite understood the power of the CDC to impose a nationwide moratorium on rents, but nonetheless, that, that does exist. The state moratorium is clearly in place, and as is the county moratorium. We have written this, uh, as we under, as far as we understood the council request to cover both residential and businesses. The businesses are defined as small businesses. If you, uh, look at the ordinance, you'll see that we actually refer to a, uh, section of the Code of Federal Regulations, and this is the Small Business Association of the United States definition of small businesses. If you actually look that up, it's interesting, it's a table that's 46 pages long that lists for every kind of business you can possibly think of, what makes it small. And the, the descriptions are generally in terms either of annual revenues or number of employees. And they're actually relatively large by kind of our standards, when we think of, uh, small business, for example. A, um, convenience store with $15 million of sales, excuse me, 30, uh, $30 million of sales is a small business, uh, which is quite a, quite a convenience store. A new car auto dealership is a small business until it reaches 200 employees. Uh, and there, as I said, there are standards for all kinds of other, uh, businesses as well. From our legal standpoint, the, the, we believe the ordinance is probably effective, or would be, would be legal. However, these ordinances have been challenged around the country, and there is no guarantee that we would not receive a challenge. And if, if it were challenged, there's no guarantee it would, would survive. Uh, the, the ordinances are generally, to the extent there's opposition to them, it's generally focused on the part of landlords who believe that... who believe that it is an impairment of contracts, because the city is saying that certain elements of a lease cannot be executed by a landlord. Mainly they can't evict a tenant. Uh, in theory, the ordinances, including this one, do provide that there is no rent abatement. Or, well, maybe, maybe abatement's the wrong word, there's a rent abatement, but the rent has to be paid at the end. The ordinance does not, uh, and does not encompass a rent forgiveness is probably a better way to put it. However, certainly, uh, certain landlords may have the, the point of view that in effect, if they can't evict a tenant, the ability to collect the rent when the emergency is over, which we don't even know when that's going to be, uh, may seriously affect their ability to ultimately collect the rent. So those are the two likely challenges that one faces to the ordinance. The other question, what we have noticed in looking at other cities in, in the, in, in our area, San Jose has an eviction, uh, ordinance. Most other cities do not, there are other councils that have discussed it. Most cities have decided that the county or the state ordinances provide enough protection, and there's no reason for the city to get involved. We do not see this ordinance as an enforcement issue for the city, because there is actually no enforcement role that the city would play. It is simply that the existence of the ordinance can be a defense to an eviction by, so a tenant can say, look, to a landlord, you can't evict us because it would violate the ordinance. The city is not in enforcement power, however, that's not to guarantee that we wouldn't get dragged into a dispute uh, in one way or another, but it's not set up that way, that we have no active enforcement role. It's not like establishing a curfew, for example, where we would then have an enforcement, uh, obligation. Anyway, that's a brief legal outline, but I'd be happy to answer, uh, any questions if you have them.
Okay, um, councilmember Braco.
Andy, um, wasn't the CDC, uh, moratorium recently, uh, struck down by a Texas court? Yes, it was, but that's one court, one place doing it, it was also recently extended. The part of the problem with these ordinances is that because they are relatively new, the emergency's only been going on for a certain period of time. There are not, um, they're not presidential appellate decisions, there can be trial court decisions, but that decision doesn't necessarily affect the ordinance here, but it, but it might end up doing so, we don't really know. And, and the sense, there, there's quite a few cases working their way up to the Supreme Court right now. And when it gets to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court rules it's unconstitutional, that it's unfair taking private property, will these jurisdictions be on the hook? For the money? Probably not, but we can't guarantee that that claim would not be made. A claim could be made that the ordinance constitutes a taking of property, and that is a risk that, uh, any jurisdiction enacting ordinance would run. Thank you. It's a very unsettled area, I would like to be able to give you more definitive, um, uh, answers to these questions, but it, it's an area that simply has not been settled because it's too new.
Councilmember Armand Dars, you had a question?
Yeah, um, there's a, um, a widely recognized definition of small business to be, um, to be 25 employees or less, it's often used for different, uh, municipal ordinances. Do you see any problems with us using that definition?
I think the definition, I, I think the city would be able to pick a definition. We ought to be able to articulate a reason why that's a good definition versus another one. We use the Small Business Administration one because San Jose had done that, they'd spent a lot of time thinking about this. Now, they probably have bigger businesses in town than we do on a general rule, so I would think the council can in fact choose a definition. Uh, it ought to be based on some, uh, some information about businesses in town that are having trouble and need the help, for example. Uh, but yes, that could be changed.
Thank you. Okay, um, might be a good time to go to public comment then, and then we'll come back and continue discussion. Um, Shawna, public comment?
Yes, if you would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand using the icon or dial star nine now. And we have Anil Babar coming in. Anil, please unmute yourself.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes. Uh-oh. He just got muted again.
Can you, okay.
Yeah, you're in.
Great, thank you, Anil Babar, uh, SVP, Senior Vice President of Public Affairs for the California Apartment Association. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. On behalf of the California Apartment Association, I would like to weigh in as you consider the, this ordinance and its necessity. CA has been very aggressive and has been and continues to be very aggressive insisting property owners sustain compliance with, um, the statewide eviction moratorium. We have developed a whole host of compliance materials to make sure that our members can, are aware of all these laws and can stay in compliance with them. And in the past two instances where more terms have either been implemented or extended, both the state and the county have implemented these more terms that cover the city of Gilroy. The benefit of having the state enact a wide-reaching moratorium is that you have one rule applying to the entire state and giving all property owners and tenants the ability to, uh, comply with just one common rule. A patchwork of ordinances can be difficult to encourage compliance. Provided that there will be a need to extend the eviction moratorium come its expiration, we are confident the state will continue their past practice to extend it. And I'm sure you'll be made aware several weeks in advance of their intent to extend that moratorium. Furthermore, if for any reason the state does not push forward with an extension, I'm sure either the county will enact one that's wide-reaching, or the city can still pass one retroactively and still cut, and still, uh, prevent a gap in coverage. And lastly, I just want to point out that the city of San Jose did pass an eviction moratorium, but that law was suspended when the state enacted their ones. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other?
Yes, uh, we have nine other people, our next speaker is Jordan Nunes. Jordan, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Jordan Nunes, representing the Santa Clara County Association of Realtors and our 6,000-plus membership base, speaking on the topic of a potential eviction moratorium. SCORE opposes the proposed local city of Gilroy eviction moratorium. We thank the mayor and council and staff for their efforts during this public health crisis. Generally, we have been supportive of protecting those most vulnerable during this unprecedented time. However, this local eviction moratorium is unnecessary and harmful. Eviction protections for vulnerable tenants and small businesses have already been implemented at the federal, state, and county levels. Adding another layer of protection is unnecessary and overly burdensome to housing providers and tenants alike that must abide by these regulations. Implementing another moratorium makes it more difficult for tenants to understand where to look for, find, to find resources, relief, and support. It also makes it impossible for our mom-and-pop housing providers to attempt to comply with several complex, confusing, and competing ordinances. Implementing this open-ended moratorium creates chaos and uncertainty as residents will struggle to understand how and when protections apply to them. We understand the importance of ensuring everyone has a safe place to shelter during a health crisis and protecting those most vulnerable tenants and businesses. Although well-intentioned, this proposed local eviction moratorium is not the right solution for the city of Gilroy at this time. We instead urge the city of Gilroy to use the resources needed to implement this local ordinance.
Okay.
Oh, we instead urge the city of Gilroy to use the resources needed to implement this local ordinance on a robust education campaign, so both tenants and housing providers are aware of the state protections and rental assistance available to them. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Uh, next speaker?
We have Teresa Perez. Teresa, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me, please?
Yes, we can hear you. We, we, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I am providing a public comment in support of a city of Gilroy proposed eviction moratorium language. As a Gilroy resident, community supporter of the unhoused, and a social service employee, I have seen the devastating impact the pandemic has had on our Gilroy families and local businesses. Our city was hit the hardest by COVID within our county, and the physical, health, economic, and mental wellness effects of this disease continues to play a huge role in the long-term issues our community is suffering from. Multiple members of families have been impacted in a variety of these stated ways, and these families are also local business owners. You can visually see the small, local business doors closing, and also our neighbors needing to move elsewhere desperately for housing and employment after eviction. Although the county and state have moratoriums, they don't offer protection for small businesses, and our county resources and programs are just not enough to support our local residents. And we need to start preparing for when these county programs and moratoriums come to an end in June. The CDC's rent moratorium is in response to the health crisis, as they have quoted, keeping people in their homes and out of crowded or congregated settings like homeless shelters by preventing evictions is a key step in helping to stop the spread of COVID-19. As we know in Gilroy, we don't have adequate shelter space or areas to help maintain safe spacing for our unhoused. Gilroy relies on its dozens of small businesses for its economy. Some local landlord, landlords are understanding and have given their tenants extended amount of time while other landlords or persons with available housing do not want to rent to these people in fear that they will not be able to pay their rent and would rather keep their available housing unoccupied. Dozens, dozens of businesses throughout our city have had to close, and many others are barely holding on. Those businesses in turn employ our neighbors and families. The threat of being evicted from your resident, from your resident or small business only impacts the health and mental wellness of our community, and this added stressor is not deserved and can be eliminated with the council's compassionate approval. I ask that you support this policy and throw our neighbors an economic and housing lifeline. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Hesus, Hesus, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Uh, good evening, everybody, uh, my name is Tuzanias, I am the program coordinator for GADAS here in Gilroy. I'm president of the grassroots agency, committed to empowerment of the community in Gilroy, and the empowerment of local communities, committed to empowerment of community cultural awareness. And speaking tonight to urge you to vote yes on councilmember Armand Dars' proposed local eviction moratorium. As everyone is clearly aware, um, COVID has had a detrimental impact on Gilroy, which has shouldered a disproportionate amount of, of the emotional, mental, physical, and economic burden that has befallen so many people during the pandemic. As a member of GADAS, I've had the privilege to work with some amazing youth in our community through our, uh, through our paid internship program. During the ongoing pandemic, I've had a front row seat. As teens still in high school, I've been compelled by the sudden need to contribute financially to their households, worrying about paying rent instead of applying for college, getting a weekend job to make sure their family doesn't get evicted instead of enjoying their final year of high school. These teens are losing now on some of their formative years because of COVID. Let's make sure they do not lose their housing because of the eviction. Please vote yes on councilmember Armand Dars' proposed local eviction moratorium, so we can keep our community members housed during the pandemic and post-pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Vanessa Ashford, Vanessa, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, I am, uh, calling in, in support of the eviction moratorium. Given the large number of service hospitality and agricultural industry employees that Gilroy has, a large demographic of our community did not have the luxury of working from home, and many were directly impacted by COVID through sickness and death within their family due to our higher infection rates. It would seem reasonable to be more protective and proactive in supporting our community households from facing becoming unhoused. Even with assistance programs, renters are still saddled with debt burden, lack of earning potential, compounded by scarcity of childcare and school supports. We need to do all that we can as a city to keep our families housed. We have unmet housing needs in most impacted demographics, extremely low income and very low income. Until we can build, we need to be aggressive in keeping people in their existing units. Economic recovery will take a long time, and we have so many vulnerable residents who will have no other housing options and ultimately will end up on our freeway onramps, creek beds, and yes, the parks. We have many families on waiting lists to qualify for an apartment or a home with our community partners, but there are no units for these people, let alone more people. These families hide in hotel rooms, older RVs, tents, garages, and we cannot meet the needs that we already have in our community. In the recent sweep, not one single person has been housed or sheltered. If we had even 10 more families evicted, that would be 40 more people that we would not be able to find any shelter option for. I think that we have a great opportunity as a community to prevent this and add more protections than the county, the state, or the CDC. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Shawna, next speaker?
Raimundo Armand Dars, Raimundo, please, um, unmute yourself.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, council, uh, thank you all for giving me time today to speak. I would like to support, um, this extension of a moratorium beyond June, um, of 2021. Um, GADAS, I'm the director of programs at GADAS, and GADAS has, over the last year, um, partnered with, uh, the Georgian, uh, Georgian Catherine Alexander Community Law Center, as well as the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley to provide housing clinics for families, uh, that our agency works with here in, um, South County, in particular in Gilroy. Uh, we've also been able to provide housing vouchers for families struggling to cover the rent. So we've seen firsthand the impact that, um, the pandemic has had on working families, um, and the struggle that they've faced to be able to, to pay rent and, and to stay, um, housed. Um, the other issue that GADAS is, is very familiar with and dealing with is homelessness and homeless families or houselessness and families that are, um, having to live, um, without a house, whether that be, um, at any of the, you know, previously mentioned, uh, houseless camps or RVs, um, that you see around town, even in parks. So, um, we believe that this moratorium will help to, um, prevent those, um, families from having to, um, live in that way and from, from families to, 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 um, become homeless or, or houseless as well. Um, and we also wanted to talk to the point that, um, somebody made earlier that, um, there's not a lot of education, or there's not a lot of, um, information, or it's just too complicated for families to take advantage of the resources that are out there. That's absolutely not true. Um, we've been able to provide, um, clinics, uh, access to attorneys at our offices uh, since the pandemic began, even previous to that, so, um, I just, uh, would like to end with, we just want to further support, um, this proposal regarding eviction moratorium here in Gilroy.
Thank you. Okay, Shawna, next speaker, everybody's been really good about staying under three minutes.
They have been. The next speaker is Jan Bernstein Shergin.
Okay.
And Jan, please unmute yourself.
Is she there?
Okay.
Yes.
Um, thank you, this is Jan Bernstein Shergin, I'm speaking in support of, um, an additional moratorium on the part of Gilroy, and, you know, I, I hope, as much as anyone else, that the county and the state and the federal eviction moratoriums are extended and are sufficient. But as the city of Gilroy, we have to be prepared in case they're not, to take care of our own residents and to prevent, as an earlier speaker said, more families from winding up sleeping in our creeks, sleeping on our freeway onramps and sleeping in our parks. We know that people stay homeless in the last place they had housing. We also know that once somebody is evicted, it can take years before they'll qualify for housing again, because an eviction on your record prevents you from renting a new unit. The best way to end homelessness is to prevent it. And we need to do what we can to prevent more Gilroy citizens from becoming unhoused. The cost at the other end is far greater. When the eviction moratoriums expire at the end of June, there will be no shelter beds available in South County, no family shelters at all, and we're going to wind up with a humanitarian crisis. Let's have something ready to go for Gilroy in case the state, the county, and the federal government don't extend their moratoriums, because the pandemic hit harder in Gilroy than in the rest of Santa Clara County, the eviction- The eviction moratorium ending will hit harder in Gilroy and then the rest of Santa Clara County. So what works for Los Altos may not be enough for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Shauna, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Garcia. Rebecca, please unmute yourself.
Rebecca, are you there?
I am here. Thank you. Good evening, council. Rebecca Garcia here. I will take, I won't take up too much of your time, but for all of the reasons already stated, I do support a ninety day moratorium. Thank you.
Okay, Shauna, can we ask people to say if they're Gilroy residents or not when they're calling in? Don't we have to do that when we're in person?
No, actually, we we cannot ask that specific question.
On the yellow card?
Correct.
Okay, my bad. Okay.
No longer can do that.
Um, for the record, I am a Gilroy resident.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarai Shabaria. And please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Sarai. I am a community member of Gilroy. Um, I currently work for the Workforce Development Board and have worked with working class folks in South County. For the past four years and I have seen firsthand and heard firsthand accounts of working class folks who. Were gravely impacted by COVID nineteen, unable to work. Um, many people in South County also were not eligible for the stimulus packet. Uh, and moreover, for that as well, um, they are not, some of them are not eligible for unemployment. So what happens, right? Rent is still requested every month. And I have heard testimonies of people struggling firsthand. So I support this ninety day moratorium. I think it delivers a great message that the county and the city is there to stand behind working class folks. And that um they are not alone in this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Shauna.
Tina Shabaria.
And Tina, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, my.
You just need, there we go. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening. My name is Tina Shabaria and I've been a resident of Gilroy for forty-nine years. Um, I do uh support this moratorium because um. Me myself is from a fixed income and um. You know, it's getting harder and harder to get my rent paid and I have two kids with epilepsy and autism. What am I to do? If I can't, you know, come up with paying my rent and be on the street. I was living here all these years. I see it getting worse and worse and worse. Um, City of Gilroy has to do something to help us. Uh, we do the best on my fixed income. Um, it's devastating. Uh, this pandemic has hit, like many have used that Gilroy extremely hard, especially us residents here who are working hard. Um, I support it. That's all I wanted to say. And hopefully the city of Gilroy and the council. Uh, members, you know, vote yes on this. We need it as citizens, you know, we need this here. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Shauna, you're on mute.
Uh.
There she is. Diana, please unmute yourself.
Did you call my name?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I have really bad uh internet connection. So my name is Diana Hodeggi. I'm a resident here in Gilroy, but um aside from being eight years. I actually am a social worker that works with older adults, sixty-five and older independent adults. And a lot of my cases, a lot of my clients, I mainly service South County with the Department of Aging Services. And we are definitely experiencing a lot of our elders uh experiencing evictions and you know, us. So trying to really prevent that and trying to work with the landlords and some landlords are flexible or not. If you know, City of Gilroy considers this a ninety day moratorium. Um, it would definitely be able to provide us another tool to utilize to really advocate for our clients, especially our older clients. Clients that have lived here in Gilroy more than, you know, forty years are, you know, definitely are our elders. And we need to really take care of them and us that are advocating for them. We need the tools to be able to do so. And the resources as there are limited resources out there for them. So please consider this. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Shauna, any others?
Yes, our last speaker, Michelle Wechsler. Michelle, please unmute yourself.
Michelle. There you are.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, can hear you.
Okay, so I just echo what some of the other speakers have said. I I definitely support the moratorium. Um, I'm a Gilroy resident. Um, I also work for the Public Health Department and I think we've all seen the data. But unfortunately, Gilroy has been very hard hit by uh COVID. Um, and so I strongly endorse the city of Gilroy to um to pass this moratorium. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, there are no other public comments.
Okay, so that being the case, it's back to council. I certainly have comments, but I'll, I'm waiting for other council members to go, okay, I see council member Hilton's hand raised. And then council member Tovar. Okay, sorry. Just to let you guys know the lineup. Oh, and then I see La Romanios. And then Rebecca Armendaras. Okay.
I guess my internet just happened to be faster.
Probably.
Um, thank you, Mary Blankley. Uh, so I've heard a lot of personal stories on this item from both sides. Including an organized opposition um that has many key points that I take into consideration. Um, I am worried though, since since we don't have any current policies or programs in place to address homelessness and prevent homelessness. This single ordinance before us might be the very first item that we can address locally. To those that are most vulnerable. The statement in the staff report sums it up for me and while I'll be supporting this ordinance tonight. Displacement through eviction can create undue hardship for renters through stress, anxiety. And additionally relocation costs that could increase the community's susceptibility to COVID nineteen. An ordinance placing a moratorium on evictions could assist in preventing the spread of COVID nineteen, promote housing and business stability. And prevent the health and welfare of residents while avoiding unnecessary displacement and homelessness. If this ordinance is adopted, I'd like to see staff have the SB ninety-one rental relief info attached to this ordinance for easy uh easy viewing. And I also would be willing to support the city of Gilroy allocating funds for rent relief to those affected by COVID nineteen as well. Thank you.
Okay, then as council member Tovar followed by council member La Romanios.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. If you uh for the, most of the council, if you recall, I brought the same item up about a year ago and and. Um, you know, obviously we had a very lengthy discussion and I think that I was satisfied with um sort of what this county and the state. Uh, moratoriums were that are in place. So I guess I have a few questions here. Is there a reason to believe that the county and state current eviction moratoriums are insufficient? You know, that's my question. I understand it's coming to an end, but you know, I. I I'm assuming it's maybe extended. So I think that's my first question. And then. Uh, the second question, and as you all have received emails from both sides. You know, again, if you know, and I'm on the fence right now, but if we were to pass this uh eviction moratorium. Would we consider passing a moratorium to protect landlords as well? Because I I worry about landlords losing their their, you know, their their buildings, their businesses and through. Bank repos and stuff like that. So I'm a little worried about that side of. Uh, the individuals that we're discussing. Yes, I I'm all in favor of, you know, supporting and helping tenants. But also we need to also look at what we can do to support landlords who may end up losing their their buildings because of what, you know, of non-payment. So I guess that's. Uh, my second, the second part of my question is if we would consider doing something like that to protect them as well. I don't know if these questions are for Andy, for Jimmy, or if we can have a further discussion on this. Anyone?
Let me, if I may.
Yeah, I was gonna say, one of you guys, because I I don't even know where to go with that, Fred.
Yeah, I think I'm the second, the second question about moratorium for landlords. Presumably that would be something that would prevent foreclosures by banks. I assume that or by 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 secured lenders. That would be very much more fraught with difficulties and legal challenges than than the tenant relief that we're talking about. Uh, that's a very uncommon thing. The state, of course, is not doing that. It has been done, it was done during the Great Depression, for example, and there's bank holiday and things of that nature, but. Uh, I think it would be very difficult for a local city like Gilroy. To be able to validly prevent landlords to to prevent foreclosures that are authorized by state law and federal contracts. And state contracts. So I think that would be very difficult to answer the second question for council member Tovar. As far as the first one is whether state or county more uh protections are insufficient, I think I would defer that question to staff and I'm. I'm not sure frankly that our moratorium would go any further than state or than the state or county ones do.
Yeah, yeah. And I would just piggyback on on Andy saying that, you know, what what's enough is really what we're asking council to decide. Uh, because we we've been living by the federal, I'm sorry, the state and county. Uh, provisions. And if you feel that's not adequate, then that's what we're asking you uh for that input. So I I honestly, just not a question. I I feel like I could answer with any kind of the, to be honest with you, intelligence.
Yeah, and thank you. I I know it's 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 a difficult question to answer. You know, I again, you know, you know, I do think about the tenants, you know, and. You know, obviously, I mean, it's it's very, very important to me, but I also look at how do we protect landlords as well? You know, because you know, uh, that's their way, you know, how they make a living, you know, and if if there's nothing in place for them. You know, then we're punishing one group and not the other. So I guess a follow-up question to that is. Would the city be at risk financially if say the land, if we were, if we were to pass this moratorium? Could we be uh at risk financially um if the landlords decided to sue the city over this moratorium?
Mayor, can I answer since I requested this of staff? Uh, no, not yet, because it's it's uh, right now it's a question of council member Tovar to staff and then it's council member La Romanios and then it's to you. So you can write it down. We'll we'll get there. But Andy, this was kind of what you were addressing, I think, in your report. I don't know if there's anything. More you can add to what council member Tovar is asking.
Yes, I in in brief answer, there there are two potential liabilities. The first is the cost of defending the ordinance itself, simply attorneys fees and so on. Uh, the second would be whether a landlord who's actually damaged by it, if it was found to be a taking. Of private property could sue us for the taking. That seems unlikely to me in the near, in the near future that that could happen, but I can't tell you that it could not happen. In other words, it is a possibility, although I I I, there haven't been such suits yet that I've seen where that have resulted in damages. But as I indicated to councilor Bracco in response to his question. The law here is new and it's developing and it is certainly potentially possible. That a city that passes a moratorium that's then held to be invalid could be held financially liable.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Andy. No, and again, like I said, you know, you know, I I really want to protect our tenants, but I also want landlords to understand and know that, you know. And I speak for myself. Obviously, I'm not speaking for the entire council, but that, you know, I do think of them and I do think about the potential loss they they may incur and. Um, you know, and I'm just trying to find a way that we can protect them as well. You know, I mean, I know it's a lot, but I just want to. You know, our local landlords who live in Gilroy, and most of them live in Gilroy, you know, so I just want to make sure they understand that. Uh, I think that, you know, protecting them as well is important to you.
Thank you, council. Everybody has their hands raised, so I'm going to try to move on. Council member La Romanios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll I'll be brief. And so I think we all can recognize that that COVID has put both our. Our tenants and and our landlords in a in a difficult spot. So I I fully can recognize how difficult that is for us as we make this decision. You know, as I, as I thought about this issue over the weekend. The way I ultimately kind of thought about it was that there there are two levels of eviction protection that are already in place, both at the state level and then at the county level. Um, from a content perspective, I don't know that our efforts to put together an ordinance in place would really substantively change that one way or another. There's already that existing uh layer of protection, again, at the state and the county levels. Uh, given the fact that, you know, we would have the opportunity if for whatever reason. The state or the county would were to not decide to extend it in in some point in the future. Um, we would have the ability to revisit this, I think. So. I think for me, as I kind of look at this and kind of decide, and it's a difficult question for sure. But as I look at it, really, I see there are those two levels of of protection that are already in place. And I don't see an ordinance from the city's perspective is really substantively changing that. So. Uh, I don't know if that helps council member Tovar, but or others, but that's that's just the way I'm looking at this issue.
Yeah, no, and I in council member La Romanios, thank you know, that that really helps me out a lot. Appreciate those comments.
Okay, council member Armand Dardes, um, and then council member Marks and council member Bracco.
Sure, thank you, mayor. So um, the reason that I brought this forward and I asked staff to look into it. Um, I know uh very well that we have um semblance of a federal protection. We have state and we have county protection for our renters, but regardless of those, you know, my work at a local nonprofit and in the community. Many, many, many people have come to me, families and individuals have come to me and said that they were evicted. Uh, many of them informally, uh, some of them uh were in the procedures or had received a notice. Uh, formal eviction and it felt like we needed a stopgap. And it felt like we needed to do something for our community to let them know that um. For residents and commercial businesses, that we need to let them know that they are supported, that these are vulnerable, unprecedented times. And the difference between um past, um, you know, a year ago and today is that. Being homeless, being put out on the street, being displaced means it it could mean life or death in these days because of the prevalence of COVID. Especially in our area, especially in Gilroy, where we had almost a hundred people die. Right? And I I received the emails from some of our local landlords and I appreciate that some of them are compassionate and understanding. And are financially in a place where they can forgive um their uh commercial um tenants for for back rent. Or not charge them interest, things like that. I really do appreciate it. But um, as we all know, in dealing with the URM buildings downtown and other uh properties downtown. I mean, in our city, there are a number of uh absentee landlords who own properties. Who don't care about our community either way, who are not, who don't respond. Who don't care about their commercial tenants, don't care about their residential tenants and let things um, you know, rot literally in our in our downtown buildings and. And our and our downtown, we see the results of that. And so that's why I brought this forward, because I think as the council, it is our responsibility to ensure that. Um, our residents have um health, that our residents are protected by us. And um, even if it's just symbolic sometimes, that we let them know that we are not going to uh subject them to more vulnerability. In a time like this of 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 real uh life and death situation.
Okay, thank you. Council member Marks.
Actually, council member Bracco was ahead of me.
Oh, okay, council member Bracco.
Thank you. Um, we have a little document here. It's called the United States Constitution. The Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments Address Private Property. And it says that the government cannot take private property without just cause and due compensation. I believe that when this gets to the Supreme Court, they're gonna find that it's unfair taking of private property. And these localities are gonna be on the hook. And they're gonna get sued and I, since. Enacting this ordinance doesn't do anything. Because it's already covered by the state and the county. All we're gonna do is add our name to a defendant's list. And you know, uh, council member Hilton, you you talked about helping them financially. That that's fine. If a council member really wants to help tenants, go in the budget and identify the money and go that route. Because. If this passes, you didn't do anything to help anyone. All you did was put it off on. If this passes, you didn't do anything to help anyone. All you did was put it off on somebody else. Making the landlord eat the rent. Right now, I've heard a lot of stories from uh, tenants and landlords, they're working together, they're working this out. And what happens so often, government gets involved. And they screw everything up, and people don't pay their rent, and then when, when this is all over. They're gonna owe twenty, thirty grand to their landlord, they're not gonna be able to pay it. So they're gonna get kicked out. Now they've got horrible credit, so no one's gonna rent to them. And it just makes things worse. I, 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 I don't believe this is really a problem that we even ought to be addressing. Right now, uh, we haven't had not one tenant come to us and tell us. That Joe landlord kicked them out because they didn't pay their rent, a- and they shouldn't have did that. Instead, we've hears, heard stories from landlords that are helping tenants. Uh, uh, I can tell you as a landlord. If you got a good tenant, you do everything you can to keep that tenant. I know that there are some landlords that are paying people to move, but that's on the tenant, if they want to accept the money. So I'm, I'm against this and I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. It's really a hardship when people have to go to bed at night and not know if they're gonna have a house. In a, in a few weeks. And I've been thinking a lot about this ordinance over the weekend. But I have to agree with um, Councilmember Tovar and Councilmember La Roman Yost and Councilmember Bracco. I'm really concerned about the city taking on the liability of a moratorium. And I heard two of the speakers, and I talked about a ninety day. Ordinance, uh, mor- moratorium, I'm sorry. And I went back and I've been scrolling through and I'm looking, I don't see ninety days anywhere in the ordinance unless I missed it. So in my mind, I'm thinking, well, how long is this going to continue? I really think, and I could be totally wrong, but I really think in my heart of hearts. The state. And the county will extend that moratorium. If people are not back at work. And they will take into consideration the hardships, because I agree with Councilmember Bracco, when you have a good renter, there is no way you're gonna let that tenant go. If we could guarantee some protection for the property owner. I would be for this. But the property owner is gonna be in the same dilemma. Some of these people have put their, all their money into maybe some rental property. And they could lose it right now because of no rent coming in. I think things can be worked out. If worse comes to worse. And July first comes and the state and county say they're no longer going to, to uh, continue the moratorium. Then I would be one of the first to say, let's reconvene, let's talk about this, let's see what we can do to help. The people, because the last thing I want to see is more homelessness on the streets, but for right now. I, I just don't feel comfortable supporting this when we have. The county and state covering um, the moratorium.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Armand Darius, I see your hand, but you've had a chance to speak and you spoke for a while. I would like to speak. And then I'd like us to take a vote.
I'd like to clarify something too, if you'd give me a minute.
Okay, a minute, okay, clarify?
Yes, so in um, section five of the proposed language. Um, it says, nothing in this ordinance shall relieve the tenant of liability for the unpaid rent. Which the landlord may seek after expiration of the moratorium. A landlord may not charge or collect a late fee for rent that is delayed during the moratorium. So I'm not sure how we would be liable if we are not taking anything from. The landlords, they in fact can collect rent, but we're allowing people an extension of time to be able to earn that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna give some comments now too. I think a- as to what you just said, I think the reason that we would still be subject to lawsuits is because like the IRS has learned long ago. You have to withhold money in the first place in order to ever get it. You know, it's just, if you're letting people not pay, the, the moratorium. Lets things accrue to a point where you will never, they will never be able to pay that, and the landlord is gonna come to the cities. That's what uh, Councilmember Bracco was saying, for putting them in that position. It's not that the ordinance says what it says. So anyway, I want to um. Point out that I, I mean, I, I am well aware that Gilroy has been one of the hardest hit areas in Santa Clara County. I know that, but as, as I'm listening to some of the call, uh, people calling in and some of the emails we've received. Uh, we are not taking care of our own. What's being suggested is that certain individuals, certain property owners. Take care of them, not, not us. So as Councilmember Bracco pointed out, if, if we want to help, then we need to take it out of. Taxpayer money, the general fund, um, vouchers to, for, for, to help people pay, but otherwise, it is not we helping, it is us telling. Certain property owners that they need to do all the helping. And that's where I have a, a, a big problem with this, and I think absolutely, we would get dragged into any disputes. Because it is a one-sided altering of an agreement. That is, that does constitute taking away someone's property, and um, I don't know about a lot of you, but I know plenty of people, my own clients. That they just have one rental property and it's something they depend on. And if that's something that's taken away from them, you're not, you can't help one by then causing a problem for another, then you haven't helped at all, you've just traded. Positions. So there's all kinds of things out there for those who are just thinking that a landlord is someone with all this money and therefore won't get hurt. Uh, that's fine, maybe there are those, but there are plenty of landlords who will get very hurt. By this, and so to have something that is more restrictive than the state and county has already done, and certainly something that uh, not very many cities. Uh, have done, uh, not something I, I'm supporting. So would somebody like to make a motion since everybody has commented?
A motion?
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Armand Darius, seconded by Councilmember Hilton, that I assume is to approve.
Yes, it's correct.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, this is a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading. Okay.
Mayor, we're not allowed to make any more comments, I just want to make sure.
Well, I'm trying to move on, if you, do you feel a burning need to say something new?
Minor brief, because again, I, I want folks to understand my, my, my position on this.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no.
You had it clear.
I think, I think many of you said it already, or this moratorium is, again, it, it's not gonna hurt. So, so it's gonna help the tenants, obviously. Um, how much more, and as Councilmember uh, La Roman Yost mentioned, how much more than what the county's doing? I'm also looking at the other side as well, is it's gonna hurt the landlords and the folks who. You know, uh, hire some of their employees from Gilroy, so I don't want to hurt one group while helping another group out, so I think, and like it said before. If come, come down the road, if we need to reexamine this, I'm all in favor of. Uh, bringing this back and, you know, going a different direction, but right now, I see myself um, going one-sided on this here, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading.
May I make a suggestion?
Oh, absolutely.
Because, because of the formality of introducing an ordinance. Even if council members are against the ordinance, I suggest voting yes on the motion to read by title only. And then the second vote is actually the, the determinative vote.
Oh, well, thank you for that. So voting yes on part A. Is not supporting the ordinance.
That's correct, it's just allowing the city clerk not to have to read the whole ordinance.
Oh, got it. Thank you for that. Okay, so Suzanne, roll call on, this is just on part A, everybody.
Mm-hmm. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy prohibiting evictions for the non-payment of rent for tenants impacted by the COVID nineteen.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
This is the motion, the motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading.
Okay. Rebecca Armand Darius.
Wait, I, I'm sorry, this needs to be more clear than that. Okay, we have, Suzanne, can you, can you just repeat item A, three A, and then do roll calls?
This is a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading. Rebecca Armand Darius. No. Uh, Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Pedro La Roman Yost.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blankley.
Yes. Okay, now onto item B. Whoa, wait, do I need a new motion and a new seconder on this?
Yes, we do.
Okay, sorry. Um, does somebody want to make a motion on item B?
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, Suzanne does need to read the ordinance title at this point.
Right.
Right, but no one has made a motion for it yet.
No, uh, prior to actually introducing the ordinance, Suzanne needs to state the, the title of the ordinance.
Yeah, pursuant to the first motion that passed, she now should state the title, and then a motion is appropriate to either approve or disapprove that ordinance.
Okay.
To introduce or, or not introduce the ordinance, I should.
Thank you.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy prohibiting evictions for the non-payment of rent. For tenants impacted by the COVID nineteen emergency and setting forth the facts constituting the need for such relief.
Okay, is there a motion to approve or not approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Armand Darius, seconded by Councilmember Hilton, to approve. Roll call.
Rebecca Armand Darius.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Whoa.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Pedro La Roman Yost.
No.
Carol Marks.
No.
Fred Tovar.
No.
Marie Blankley.
No. All right, so that motion fails? And that's.
Side of them, yes.
Yeah, that, that fails five to two. Right. Okay. Is that, I move on now, right? Move on? Okay. Item eleven, city administrators' reports. Jimmy, happy you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually have a, a little bit lengthy report, because we've had a lot of things happen the last couple of days, and been very interesting. Uh, first of all, I want to talk about the uh, the mattress recycling event that we conducted on Saturday. And it was a um, very, very, very successful event. It was so successful that two semi-trucks were filled up within three hours. Uh, and so uh, we allowed people just to go ahead and dump some mattresses, because we didn't want to turn them away, but um. In talking to the company that does this, the, the, the Recycling Council, they said this was the biggest event they've had this year. And uh, they could have easily field, uh, ta- taken six hundred mattresses. So we're coming back in June. Um, I've already talked to the organizers of this, and it's, it's shown that there is a pent-up demand that uh, we need to address, and. For all of you taxpayer advocates out there, which is, should be all of you, uh, you've already paid for this, so I did get some emails saying that, you know, um. That they didn't quite understand how this got funded, so when you do buy a mattress, uh, you are charged a twelve dollar and fifty cent recycling fee. Uh, South County does not have a robust recycling program for mattresses, so we, we offered it up this time, we're gonna do it again. Uh, move it around town to some different locations for those who can't drive. And um, so there's more to come, so I apologize for any frustration that anybody had, but um. We, uh, nobody else knew this was gonna be so successful, and uh, we are committed to getting better at it, so thank you to everyone who participated. Uh, second, I want to uh, discuss a little bit of some news I've been hearing from the city managers' group I go on to every Thursday. Uh, and concerning uh, opening up city halls and city council meetings. And right now, the other ma- city managers, I have discussed that uh, no city is essentially looking at this right now. Um, I am committed to uh, implementing or creating and implementing this, this uh, city's workplace reopening. Uh, program where we are guided by uh, triggers uh, as we find COVID levels. And um, things start to reopen, uh, we will, we will have a definitive plan to share with council about how that would work, but right now, uh, opening up city hall and, and. Us recommending coming back to city hall for council meetings is, is just not on the radar. And uh, we are being advised by the county representatives not to do so as well, so. Um, you'll see more of this coming up, but there is a plan for you to consider uh, in, in the near future. Uh, ne- next, I wanted to talk a little bit about the federal stimulus money that was uh, s- s- spoken about. The American Rescue Act is the city's eleven point six million dollars. Uh, to date, the federal government still has not provided guidelines on how that will work exactly. We have a pretty good sense. And we were notified that uh, we should expect within two weeks that we'll get the federal guidance, and then we'll be coming back to council with that as well. And then lastly, uh, one, I've heard a lot of talk about grants and grant writers and, and, and getting grant funding, and so I felt it was time to maybe uh. Uh, speak our good achievements every once in a while, because sometimes we forget to do that, but I do want to thank Sarah Soto, who is an engineer in our public works department, she applied for the uh, Governor's Office of Emergency Services Grant. And we received three hundred thousand dollars to uh, do some generator work at city hall. So thank you, Sarah, and so I'm gonna keep coming back with grant good news for you. Uh, a- and I'm sure you'll be happy to hear it. That, that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I see Councilmember Tovar with his hand raised. A question for Jimmy, maybe?
Yeah, no, just, just a comment. Um, uh, Jimmy, again, I want to thank you and all those involved in regards to the mattress program. Uh, for those that uh, may not know, when I first brought this up, and I want to thank the community members who reached out to me. To our city manager, he took the ball and ran with it, and I appreciate you sort of moving quickly on this, and. I know that all our community members appreciate the work that was done, so thank you again, and uh, we look forward to the next one. Thank you.
Okay, and it looks like Councilmember Armand Darius maybe has a question for you too?
Um, no, I, I just wanted to um, to thank Jimmy um. For the work on that. The community was really happy to have that opportunity. Um, and I hope that we can, um, I know we already talked about this, but I hope that we can. Hold the next one uh, on the east side, because there was a lot of residents there that needed help, um, and didn't have a truck or a, a means to get over um, to city hall, so. So thank you. I hope we can, you to have them.
Okay, item uh, twelve, give my Roman numerals off, uh, city attorney's report. Andy?
Uh, there is no report, but I can read the closed session if uh.
Well, before, before you do that, if you don't mind, I'd like to go to Shawna and say. This, is this your last meeting with us?
Yes, it is, Madam Mayor, it is.
So everybody take a good look, okay? Because I know we are, we are losing our Shawna.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. No.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. I didn't know you were gonna be here until I saw the, the thing you sent me today, so uh, thanks for everything, we certainly wish you well. Um, yeah, we're in, we're in good hands, and I'll let, I'll let Andy go on now, but I didn't want the meeting to end without that acknowledgement.
We're gonna miss you, Shawna.
Thank you so much. I, I truly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Do you want to read the agenda item as a last act, Shawna?
You know, I'm okay with you doing it, Andy. Thank you, though.
I tried, okay. This will, this will take a little while. We have four closed sessions. The first one is conference with labor negotiators, collective bargaining units, and there are three separate items. Uh, pursuant to uh, your uh, Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six, Gilroy Code seventeen A eleven four. Collective bargaining units are local twenty eight oh five I A F F fire unit representing Gilroy firefighters. ASME Local one oh one representing employees affiliated with ASME. Local one oh one, and Gilroy Management Association, Gilroy Police Officers Association representing Gilroy police officers. Also, unrepresented confidential exempt employees, unrepresented confidential non-exempt employees. Non-exempt part-time temporary seasonal employees. Exempt part-time temporary seasonal employees and department employees. Also, city negotiators are Jimmy Forbes, city administrator Leanne McPhillips, H R director. Anticipated issues are wages, hours, benefits, working conditions. Memorandums of understanding, City of Gilroy and Gilroy firefighters, local twenty eight oh five. City of Gilroy and ASME Local one oh one representing employees affiliated with ASME Local one oh one. City of Gilroy and the Gilroy Management Association. And City of Gilroy and Gilroy Police Officers Association. So that's all the first closed session. The next two are conference with legal counsel for existing litigation. Pursuant to uh, uh, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D one. And Gilroy City Code Section seventeen A eleven three A. The first case is Jose Solario versus City of Gilroy Police Department, Roberts, Aniga, et cetera. United States Northern Court, United States District Court for the Northern District. Case number C nineteen oh eight one oh five B L F filed September five, twenty nineteen. Second case pursuant to the same uh, sections. Is uh, Joseph Foshee versus City of Gilroy, Roberts, Aniga, those one through ten inclusive, same court. Uh, case number five twenty dash C V oh 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 one three two V K D, filed January seven, twenty twenty. The final negoti- the final closed session, the fourth one, is public employee employment appointment. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven and Gilroy Code Section seventeen A eleven two for the city clerk position. So the next thing to do is to take public comment, and then I will give uh, advice about entering into uh, closed session for the two litigation matters.
All right, is there a public comment?
If you have a public comment, please dial star nine or raise your hand with the raise your hand icon. Madam Mayor, there are no public comments.
All right, then, uh, in my opinion, it would prejudice the position of the city to discuss. All right, then, uh in my opinion, it would prejudice the position of the city to discuss the two litigation matters in open session. And I therefore recommend going into closed session with respect to those two matters. So the next matter is to take a vote on the two litigation sections, sessions alone. About whether or not to go into closed session for those two. So we take a roll call vote now.
All right, roll call vote.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Roman Yost.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Uh Marie Blankley.
Yes. So that was unanimous?
Yeah, that vote is unanimous, so the next thing is to adjourn to closed session, and in closed session, the first item is to take a vote to remain in closed session. For the first item and the last item.
Okay, so we are adjourning to closed session.